You have a forum?
We can do that.
We really need three of you, all three of you have to say yes for any of the packets. You gotta have a public forum, not the present board, but forum.
We'll call to order the special meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, roll call vote.
Yep, Berg. Kleski is absent, Jacobitz is absent, Bealy, Berthold here, you have a quorum.
Okay.
And Commissioner Miller's not here.
Okay. We had in our packet, the minutes from the June meeting, which was our last meeting we had. Anybody have any additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept them. Any discussion on minutes? All in favor, I opposed, okay, minutes approved. Do we have our first item? Are they online yet, Jeremy, Jeremiah?
If that's them online, sure.
Temporary use for six thirty-eight West Mami Street. Is there anybody online to speak on that? Well, we can come back to that then.
Uh, yeah, hi, I'm Ashley King, representing Creek Enterprise, sorry about that.
Could you just give us a brief explanation of what it is you're asking for, please?
Yeah, so Creek Enterprise is, we're hoping to host an EV meet and greet tomorrow. Um, we would have EV vehicles from Bell Ford and Cliff, Cliff Auto. We are gonna showcase our EV infrastructure trailer that we have created and kind of just showcase what Creek Enterprise is, what we do, and keep it in the parking lot. We have signs and cones all ready to go, different signs to do the path. We worked with Jeremiah to make sure we could create a pathway to go in and out without it affecting anything else going around. Um, so ultimately, just from eleven to five during business hours, inviting other businesses to come out to kind of just see what we have going on with our business.
Okay, I noticed there was a little comment on the city. You have one way in and one way out?
That's correct.
Okay. Coming in off of that river?
Uh, St. Joseph, I believe that is.
Okay, then going up onto Mami.
Mami, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
And we have barricades, sewn, signs, cones, all types of different things from our construction team. So we'll have that all set up first thing in the morning.
Commissioners, questions?
No, the drawings are very helpful and seem pretty clear.
Awesome.
Mr. Berg, any questions? Okay. To grant this use, we need to go down through some finding and facts, so we'll go through those at this time. The temporary use permit is compatible with various provisions of this chapter. And I think we'll discuss as we go along here, so we'll say yes on that as we get to it. The temporary use is reasonable use of land compatible with the general plan, land use designation, and zoning classification. Uh, it's an adaptive reuse application allows for them, the use of office nature, the showing of these products during the work hours would be appropriate due to the, due to this approval. Find yes for two. Three, the temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of the land or the orderly development of the land in the immediate vicinity. Uh, they provided us with a map that shows the parking and shows how they're going to travel around. Uh, the entire event's going to be maintained, excuse me, on their parking lot, so it's not gonna interfere with anybody else's land, so I would find yes for number three. Excuse me. Number four, the temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent uses, buildings, or other structures. Once again, uh, the traffic pattern is described, that seems to meet what the city is looking for. So I find yes for number four. The temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Are we concerned, we have any issues with people driving through? I don't know where your stuff's going to be for sure. You're gonna be kind of displayed up and along the east side, and parking's gonna be on the south side, correct?
Yeah, yep, yep, so we'll kind of be in like our front oval lot, and Andrew, are you on to answer for that, sorry?
And when the cars exit onto Mami, they're going to go out the drive on the west side?
Yes, they'll have to.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, uh, find yes for number five. Provisions for adequate traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, and pedestrian safety have been provided and will be maintained during the operation and use of the activity. Number three, I've got a map showing, and just like we talked about, so we're good for number six. Number seven, that to grant the temporary use permit is made subject to those conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare and the, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Once again, anybody can apply for the same type of thing, so there's nothing there. And that takes us through for a recommendation or motion. That we find affirmative for all the items?
May I ask one question first?
Ask away.
Uh, if I'm driving down Mami to come to this event, will I see a sign telling me to go around to St. Joseph?
Yes, yep, I have two signs that I'm gonna put right in front of the barricades that state must enter to through St. Joseph's. Um, and there'll be two, so you can see it at either, either direction.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody, audience questions, anybody else online questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, given that we have found affirmative on all of the eight items, I recommend that I move that we approve the permit as requested.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have support. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Bealy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
You're all set?
Have fun.
Next item on the agenda?
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Deals with ten thirty-two South Main Street, and this is an appeal of an administrative decision. Uh, what I'm thinking that we'll do, gentlemen, is I'm going to briefly have the city talk a little bit about what they did, and then I want you to talk about what you're thinking, and then we'll go questions from there. Greg, are you going to present?
I am, if you can hear me, can you hear me?
Yep, here you just fine.
Okay, good, well, I'm in a cottage up north, so that's miracles of technology here. Um, so this, this was a business that got a zoning exception permit to operate a marijuana dispensary at ten thirty-two South Main Street, and it got it a long time ago, back on November fifth, twenty nineteen. Um, there's a kind of a storied history to it that's not really germane to the issue before you. Uh, relevant to what you have to determine tonight is the fact that ultimately, they got a certificate of occupancy to occupy the building on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. I, I will tell you, and I don't know if any of you had a chance to go by and look at the facility before the meeting tonight, but it was not built out in the nature of a marijuana dispensary. Those have very particular requirements in terms of secure areas and areas where uh, the product is not directly accessible to the public when they come in. Uh, this is just a vanilla box buildout, and the story was always that while they were gonna finish it later. Uh, in any event, because we also regularly license this under the city's licensing regime for marijuana facilities, uh, at a certain point, we told them that if they did not open by, uh, the end of twenty twenty-three, we were no longer going to advise the cannabis regulatory agency that they were in compliance with our ordinances. And, um, they did ultimately open for a brief period of time in December of twenty twenty-three, from December twenty-first to December twenty-ninth, and then they closed again. And they told us that they were closing because they were gonna remodel the premises to actually become a, as they, I believe they put it, first-class retail facility, marijuana retail facility. Uh, later on, when it got closer to the deadline for applying for a new license, our, our marijuana licenses expire at the end of July each year. They wrote to the clerk and essentially, or perhaps it was the then-city attorney and said, just joking, we're not actually gonna remodel it, uh, but we would still like to renew our license. So, uh, giving them every benefit of the doubt, I waited until six months passed after December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, and then I advised them, but it was my opinion that their, uh, that their zoning exception permit had lapsed and become void because of six months of inactivity. Uh, in reality, I think you could count back to twenty nineteen, and you know, there was virtually no legitimate act, business activity taking place in those premises. Um, but, you know, we, we advised them that as of that time, uh, we considered it void and that we would not be renewing their marijuana license, which we did not do. Uh, so they're not currently licensed for a facility there. Uh, I, what I would like you to do, so subsequent to my correspondence then, which was, uh, transmitted on July eighth, twenty twenty-four, to a person who represents themselves as a paralegal with Weisberger Ventures. Subsequent to that, uh, they indicated they wanted to appeal that decision. They perfected their application by paying the fee on September fourth of twenty twenty-four. Many, many days after the time for filing the appeal, the language from your ordinance is in our staff report. You know, that you got in your packet, but it's ten days. Uh, so that, I, I mean, I, I would advise you that I believe you do not have jurisdiction to hear this appeal for the reason that they did not file it in a timely manner. That being said, I would like you to uh, interpret our ordinance, which is within your power, uh, as the zoning board of appeals on this point, because, uh, they have subsequently contended that, oh, they had a handful of sales in April, so really, six months did not lapse. And the fact is, as far as I'm concerned, and that's my opinion of the department's, community development department's opinion, that, uh, operating for a handful of days over the course of a six-month period, or in fact, as is the case here, over the course of several years, does not constitute doing business as is contemplated by, uh, you know, our zoning ordinance provisions related to when a uh, either a zoning, well, in this particular case, zoning exception use, uh, would cease to operate. This has been, as I said, years and years that there's been only a handful of days that they have operated in any fashion whatsoever. We're not aware that they were indeed open for business, uh, on those days in April. I don't think it matters, one way or the other. Yeah, instructive on this point, although it's not exactly on point. If you look at your zoning ordinance and the definition of commercial use in your zoning ordinance, there, there's language in there about when a yard sale or a garage sale would become commercial use. And what it says is if it happens more than two days in a calendar year, or two times for span of several days, I, and Jeremy can give you the exact, uh, language there if you're interested in it, uh, in a calendar year, that that's okay, that's the yard sale. But if it get, if it operates more than that, uh, then it is a commercial use. Well, this was, by that standard, this wasn't even a commercial use, uh, and I would agree with that. It was not a commercial use. It was a vacant space, and as you, if you've looked at it, it's not in any condition uh, for, uh, business to be operated from that space. Uh, and so we would ask that you also interpret your ordinance, uh, to, as it relates to these facts, that, uh, this did not constitute, uh, a commercial use, uh, and then in fact, did not constitute doing business at, for the zoning exception use that was permitted as contemplated by your ordinance. But at the end of the day, uh, as I said, uh, we don't think you have jurisdiction to hear this appeal because it was filed late. And, uh, we did prepare a resolution that, that we think would be appropriate for your action. Obviously, you're free to adjust that or, or redo it any way you want, but, uh, it is in your packet. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. I know Jeremy's there and the city attorney's there as well, if you have any questions.
Right now, before we get into questions, I'd like to have whichever gentleman or both of you, just give us a name, please, and kind of tell us your side of things.
Thank you, my name is Benjamin Byram, I'm an attorney with Dyke Magassit, and I'm here on behalf of Weisberger Ventures too. So, uh, Mr. Elliott laid out some, you know, events as he believes they occurred. Um, a lot of inaccuracies in what he said respectfully. Um, he's asked you to interpret the ordinance, but that's not what you're here to do. Now, the city has the ability under the zoning ordinance to ask you to interpret that. That's not what we're here for. We're here for review of an administrative decision, not to interpret it in the fashion that Mr. Elliott is asking you to. Moreover, his, uh, respectfully, again, his interpretation of a language concerning, uh, commercial use and regarding a garage, a garage sale or yard services, um, I think that actually works in, in my, uh, the appellant's favor, because what that does is it establishes the threshold for being commercial activity at two times. That's, that's it, that is the threshold. You do it two times, you're at commercial use. We, the appellant did far more than that. So I don't know how that's relevant, um, to say that the zoning exception permit should be revoked. In fact, I think it's quite the opposite. Um, but in terms of, you know, whether the use ceased or not, it is indisputable that it most certainly did not. This facility opened on December twenty-first, it operated through December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. It then opened on, it, it made sales, it, it operated April twenty-ninth and April thirtieth. That is approximately four months. Section four point seven two sub E of the zoning ordinance, all it says is, and I'm paraphrasing, business operations cannot cease for a period of six months. It's a, it's a math, it's math at this point, four months, that's all that happened. Now, while this is going on, and I'd also like to address another point. Um, we've heard multiple versions of why it was revoked and whatnot. The first, in a letter from Mr. Elliott, it simply stated, he acknowledged the December activity and then simply said, there's been no more use. The appellant responded, provided metric sales, state metric sales reports confirming business activity within six months. In response to that, uh, a appellant was told in a, a letter by the city attorney that essentially, they still just considered the the use not to be within the confines or as contemplated by the zoning exception permit. The problem with that is that number one, they did, they did operate within six months. But number two, there is no authority or ability to interpret the clear, unambiguous expressed language of the zoning ordinance. All it says is business operations cannot cease within six months or for more than six months. It never, ever happened. It is indisputable. There are state metric sales reports confirming that. And the, the city has taken an interpretation that is nowhere in the zoning ordinance. There's absolutely no reference or definition or metric or any sort of measure that speaks to the whether business operations are sufficient or not. In fact, I'm glad Mr. Elliott pointed out, the threshold for a commercial activity is extremely low. And appellants certainly satisfied that two times within four months. So there is no doubt that they did satisfy the ordinance. Now, the, the letters that appellant has received on this speaks to they didn't operate as contemplated by or within the confines. Those are just self-interpreted or injected phrases. They do not appear in the zoning ordinance. When there is, in Michigan case law is really clear on this. When you have an ordinance and is clear, unambiguous, express language, that is how you interpret it. There is no discretion here. There is no ability to look at it, look at the plain meaning and then insert your own interpretation, like the confines of the zoning exception permit. The zoning exception permit is one of the most generic, basic permits that says nothing other than commercial for the use, which Mr. Elliott has established we satisfied. And there is just no ability to do that. This is an interpretation that is unfounded. It is way beyond the scope of anyone within the city. On top of that, we don't know who made the, this decision. We don't know if it's, you know, Mr. Elliott refers to the timing of the appeal. But even in the agenda for tonight, the staff report that presumably is prepared by Mr. Elliott, it says they consider the zoning exception permit void six months after the CFO was issued. He told you tonight, the CFO was issued on June 21st of 2022. That means it would have expired in December of 2022. However, they have also confirmed that there were in fact, business operations. In fact, members of the city went to the facility when it was opening and they confirmed this. So we need, you, you can't have all these different interpretations and then decide which one you think is the best story, what you want to land on. There's clear express language. It requires that no business operations cease for more than six months, which did not occur. Business operations happen. I understand there's frustration. The city wants to see this move forward. I understand all of that. But the reality is the ordinance, and that's all that matters, is what it says. The ordinance was complied with. There's absolutely no basis to do this. On top of that, the, the timing here, I believe the city has very unclean hands in this matter. The letter of, of July 8th issued by Mr. Elliott was the first response. And it was actually in response to the commercial marijuana facilities permit application, the annual renewal application that was submitted in April. They reached out to the city over 20 times. They placed phone calls. They came here in person. They were told by the city clerk that the city administrator, Mr. Elliott, told the clerk, no one can talk to this applicant except him. They tried to talk to the building department. They asked questions. They got nothing. It wasn't until July 8th that Mr. Elliott sent his letter, which was completely wrong, inaccurate and, and false. For the first time, this idea that the zoning exception permit was revoked, rescinded, void was ever raised. So he clearly, in his mind, he said either, well, first he said that it was void six months after June 1st, 2022. And then now he's saying, well, okay, I guess we'll consider the December 2023. So then what he did was instead of responding like he's supposed to do, he waited until the six month period that he believed had lapsed to send this letter. Again, improperly stating that the zoning exception permit was void. On top of that, the appellant here submitted a letter through counsel to the city on July 10th. July 19th, he was, counsel received a correspondence back. Again, if July 8th was the date that the administrative decision was made, why, you know, why is the city waiting till the day after? It's, it's a pattern. It's a series of events. And again, I understand the frustration. It has been a long time. There's no dispute about that. Those are the facts. But the reality is they complied with the ordinance and there is no authority to revoke the zoning exception permit. That's all there is to it. Perhaps the ordinance should be amended to clarify that. If you want to have a, a standard of business operations, the ordinance could have easily said that. The regulatory ordinance, the zoning ordinance, there are, there's all kinds of provisions in there that speak to requirements. Nowhere, not one single line in either of those ordinances speak to the level, the sufficiency or any metric of how many number of days or sales or anything other than the requirement that business operations do not cease for six months, which again, without question, indisputably did not occur. For those reasons, we respectfully request that the zoning exception permit be reinstated or reissued promptly and reverse the decision of Mr. Elliott, somebody within the city. We're not really sure who made the decision, but we respectfully request that that is reversed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Elliott, you have a response to anything?
Sorry, had to unmute there. Well, I mean, I, I don't, I don't really have any response to that. I mean, it seems to be an admission of just what I told you. He is not correctly stating to you what the commercial use definition says. It's more than two times, not two times in a year, but more than two times a year constitutes commercial use. They operated exactly two times in a year. And so by that definition, it would not be commercial use. But like I told you, that's some evidence of what it's supposed to mean. We think it's within your purview to decide what the ordinance means on this point and whether this is consistent with that, whether in fact, the facility that just is not even built out to function as a marijuana dispensary could in fact, ever have opened within the meaning of the zoning exception permit provisions of the ordinance. Also, I would note that the application that you received, which is in your packet, request for appeal is dated August 9th, 2024. Yeah, that was, standing that, the fee wasn't paid for another month after that, approximate month after that and sometime in September. 10 days. I didn't hear any dispute to the fact that the appeal window is 10 days. That was how long they had to appeal. They did not appeal. All of this is just absurd, right? You know, we've, we granted this zoning exception permit in 2019. And even by their own testimony, the only activity in all that time has been for approximately 10 days, possibly 10 days, generously 10 days. That's absurd. That is not doing business. And I think you all know that, but that's all I have to add in response.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Again, Mr. Elliott is incorrect. So commercial use, he says two times. He just admitted it's 10 times. Okay, let's get that clear. Stop trying to lower the bar there. Again, the ordinance says what it says. You have no ability to interpret it differently. 10, whether it's 10 days, whether you don't like 10 days or not, no problem. I get that, but that's not two times. It is 10 separate days within, within four months.
How many days?
I let you speak, Mr. Elliott. Mr. Elliott, I let you speak. I would appreciate the same. I like, and I will listen to you as when I'm, I've got a lot more to say. So no, that is 10 times. He said two times. It is 10 different days. Again, to look at it any other way is again, inserting some sort of interpretation that is not permitted. At what point are you going to consider it to be one time? Is it four months? Is it 63 days? It's whatever Mr. Elliott wants. That's not how it works. An instance is a day. It's the only way to look at it. It's 10 different days within four months. It absolutely satisfies that. It is commercially used by the definition of your own ordinance. Second, he talks about the fee. My appellant's chastised for the fee. I received, I called, I spoke to somebody from the city. I asked about the fee. I was told you will get an email with the invoice. On August 30th at 12:46 PM, I received that email. The email said, please pay the fee by September 4th to make the next meeting. It was paid September 4th, five days later, three business days. Okay? So again, complete mischaracterization of the situation here. In the 10 days, if you read the ordinance again, the ordinance says 10 days of a decision by the building inspector. Mr. Elliott is not a building inspector, unless I'm wrong. I don't know that for a fact, but I don't believe he is. Again, there's, the ordinance says what it says. Mr. Elliott is taking interpretations that he just wants to make to shut this place down. It's not right. It's not permitted and there's no authority to do it. Every point he made, he's just been wrong. Again, he alludes to the fact, he doesn't like appellant. We get that. He doesn't like that they haven't operated that much time over the years. I understand that. Respectfully, it's irrelevant. The only thing that is relevant is the ordinance and what it says. Not what it doesn't say, which is what Mr. Elliott wants you to interpret, which again, that's not why we're here. The city has the ability to come to the ZBA and ask for that. The city didn't do that. We are here for one reason and one reason only, to, to clarify that appellant did satisfy the ordinance. That's it. There is no dispute. We have state metric sales confirming it.
All right, if you're done now, can we have somebody read from the definition of commercial use in the ordinance? So I think you'll see that it's instances, not days. So Jeremy or somebody there who has the zoning ordinance, please, please read that definition.
But Mr. Elliott, before that, he reads it, I would, I would like to say regardless, if you want to say instances, that's still two. We have December and we have April. That's four months apart.
What you'll find if you let them read it is that it's more than two. But go ahead and read it. The ordinance speaks for itself.
A commercial use relates to the use of the property in connection with the purchase, sale, barter, display or exchange of goods, wares, merchandise or personal services, or the maintenance of offices or recreational or amusement enterprises. Garage, rummage, basement, porch, lawn sales and similar sales conducted on residential premises are hereby deemed a commercial use. If such sales are conducted on more than two occasions during any consecutive 12 month period, or if either of said two sales last for more than six days.
Thank you. That satisfies it. Seven days, seven days, December 21st.
That is, well, okay, zoning board of appeals, please also incorporate the word occasions as it relates to commercial use because I understand that to mean consecutive days of operation. It would be again, absurd to have this conversation about any going concern business because that's not the way they operate. And we all know that's not the way they operate. To the point of, can I also finish, Mr. Bayram?
Mr. Elliott, hold on, hold on a second. Let's get some order here. It doesn't, I, I don't care who's gonna present, but somebody, one at a time, we can't, I can't hear what's going on.
Fair enough.
So Chairman, if you want Mr. Elliott to go, that's.
Anything else to say at this time, Greg? Yeah, the one other thing I wanted to add is, so he references the fee and, you know, the fee being what it is, the application that you have in your packet was dated August 9th, 2024. That's over 30 days after the decision was rendered. And by, by the way, as all you know, but Mr. Bayram does not, I am also the community development director for the city and therefore run the department that the building inspector works for. But obviously the language in the old zoning ordinance about building inspector doing these things is just obsolete language. All these things are done by either the planning and zoning administrator or the community development director anymore.
Okay.
Okay, for Mr. Jacoby, yeah, something to say?
First, first of all, both to my fellow commissioners and to the audience, and my apologies for being late. This group usually meets at seven o'clock.
No apology necessary.
Right. Oh, my goodness. Well, go ahead. Doesn't set a good example here. No, no. Um, and unfortunately, I would contend that the, the definition of commercial use in our ordinance doesn't apply here. I'm willing, I, we, we need to discuss this in more, in more detail. Excuse me because I'm speaking to your advantage here, right?
Yeah, I'm not, no, I was agreeing.
In that the, the phrase that Jeremiah just read specifically refers to garage, rummage, basement, porch, lawn sales and similar sales conducted on residential premises. It does not make any interpretation of timeframes for commercial use.
And if it did, says the English professor, the sentence is constructed with an if and an or if, so the two options are equally valid. If either of them lasts more than six days and one of them lasted eight days. So I don't think that, I don't think 2.39 helps us much in any way, but if did.
It doesn't apply to this case.
I don't think it applies to this case. What I would, well, I'm sorry. It's not my turn to talk.
Go ahead.
What I would really like to know is whether in fact, we are allowed to hear this appeal. I, I'm not capable of rendering that judgment, but Greg says we are not.
Why not?
Well, I, I think that you're here tonight for two reasons. One, it has been brought up as to whether it was timely or not. And I think you have the ability to decide whether or not it was timely. The second thing is you have before you essentially an interpretation of a zoning ordinance. You have heard the position, and I, I know we're not done. I think you still want to present. But we've heard the position of the city administrator, the, the city. And we are now, I think Weisberger Ventures is not quite complete, but once you hear that, I think you do have the ability to, courts have held that municipalities can interpret their ordinances. What Mr., I forget your last name, sir.
Byram, no problem.
Byram?
Yeah.
What Mr. Byram is saying is that when it's clear and unambiguous, then you can. But the question becomes, and I, I think part of what you're hearing is an argument over whether that, whether that is or it isn't. And I think you yourselves have even brought up that question, but the, in what I see here, you, you have two decisions to make and I think you should make them both. However, you want to decide. One, is it timely? Two, the interpretation of the ordinance and by that, did they meet the definition as required by the zoning exception permit?
And has, and as Greg has advised us, if it is not timely, we can't ask the second question.
Well, it, it, it may become a moot point. But what he, what he said was, even though he believes that it's not timely, he does want you to answer the second question as well.
Okay.
Mr. Byram?
Yes, Mr. Jacoby, thank you for pointing that out. I, I was entertaining it because to me it is the only sort of reference that speaks to time. And that was the basis of Mr. Elliott's reason for denial. And by his own admission, we certainly satisfied the second criteria in any event. In terms of the, the standing or whether it was late, again, we didn't even receive correspondences, the purposefully delayed correspondences to time this out. It's unclean hands. You can't do that. On, on top of that, again, Mr. Elliott is not a building inspector. He may run the office fair enough, but he's not the building inspector, nor is he an attorney to interpret his ordinance like that. It's not for him to make these decisions. Now, this to me is extremely clear. There is language. It says what it says. That is it. There is no other room for interpretation. The case law in Michigan could not be more clear. In the, in the application for appeal that I submitted, I listed out very clearly in there. The corollary of that is that you can't deviate from that. You have to look at it for what it says. And those ordinances, there are plenty of opportunities to otherwise define business operations or use, or however you want it to say. But it doesn't. It doesn't. And so you cannot deviate from that. And that's where we are. In terms of being late or whatnot, I, I, I would submit to you, it's not late because he's not the building inspector and the 10 days applies to the building inspector decision. So again, that's just what the ordinance says. He, he refers to, everyone knows that's where, you don't get to do that. You legally have no ability to say, yeah, everyone kind of thinks that. That's not what this is. The ordinance says cannot cease for six months and that just didn't happen. It is indisputable. So, thank you. Yes.
So now, now you have two decisions to make. The first one. Um, the first one, I, I believe is whether it was timely or not. The second one is the interpretation of the ordinance. And you can see from, you can see the city's position. I believe you can see Weisberger's, I apologize, Weisberger Ventures position in their appeal. Um, essentially, the city is stating that this, this isn't a business as anticipated by our zoning ordinance. Um, and I think that's what you're, you're interpreting. It's not an ongoing business as far as that is what they are saying. I disagree with the, uh, the opinion that, that you cannot interpret. It's actually very well settled that municipalities can definitely interpret their ordinances and, and you need to look at what, how this looks with the city. You, you hear all of these appeals and, you know, what is an ongoing business? Do you hand out zoning exception permits to vacant buildings and then let them stay there? No, you don't do that. I, I really am not asking either way, but I am making it clear to you that you do have the power to make, to decide this, whether you decide to uphold the administrator's decision, or you decide to overturn it. You do have that power.
Questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Brian, Brian, Brian?
Byram.
Byram, I'm sorry.
We need a.
Phrenetic tag.
Uh, the appellate received a zoning exception permit from the planning commission in November of twenty nineteen.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And the claim is that they were made operational in December of twenty-three, four years later. What, what was going on in the interim? Because in my understanding is that zoning exception permits are good for at most a year.
Sure. Uh, one, you know, first and foremost, COVID obviously occurred, you know, shortly after they got it. Um, so that clearly played a role here. Uh, beyond that, um, a number of things happened. They revised the floor plans, they encountered structural issues inside, a lot of things. And again, I'm not, I'm not here to, to give you a million justifications and tell you that, you know, this A, B, C, D, E happened, and that's why it took so long. It did. It's, it's been a long time. There's no, there's no disputing that.
But, but again, if we, as you have said, if we go by strictly by the letter of the ordinance, the zoning exception permit expired twelve months later.
I, I don't know how the.
And it doesn't say, well, except for COVID, or except if they had to do other building permits or stuff like that.
Sure. I, I don't know. I, I know a lot of cities, municipalities during COVID did, um, you know, unilateral extensions, or I'm not sure how this city handled it, but what I can tell you.
Four years, though?
Well, and, and I don't know how they handled it, but I think that's sort of irrelevant to the point that the city acknowledged. They acknowledge it, that it operated in December of twenty twenty-three. In fact, they sent a letter in July of twenty twenty-three saying, saying, yes.
I understand. I've, and I think I've heard this.
Okay.
Certificate of occupancy was issued in June of twenty-two.
Correct.
And then it was still eighteen months before they claimed operation after that.
Correct.
Again, what was going on then?
Same things.
Okay.
Floor plans, issues, building.
Okay. The business was allegedly operational for nine days in twenty-three and two days in twenty-four. I'm just kind of restating the fact, if you don't mind.
Fair enough, yeah.
If the facility was functionally operational in April, this last April, why didn't they just open? Why were they only open for two days? If they were functionally operational on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, why didn't they just open?
Sure. So they had building permits. So the floor plan was about fourteen hundred square feet. They wanted to expand it to about three thousand to maximize the use. They had building permits that they obtained from the city. The city was aware of this plan. The previous city attorney, Mr. John Galouli, had many conversations about it. There are, there are email correspondences about it. City was well aware of their plan to open, and, and they, they were open about this. They said, we know we have six months. We're gonna open. We're gonna shut down. We're gonna do some work. We're gonna satisfy it. And that's what happened.
During the last two days of April, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, or whatever the specific dates were, um, were there retail store fixtures in place in the business?
Uh, I, I don't know. I mean, Kevin may be able to answer that question. I honestly don't know.
A view, a view through the window suggests that it's just spare space.
I believe it was open. I believe that stuff was put back in there.
Was there product on site that time?
Yeah, certainly there was. I mean, they, they made sales.
Was there secure storage for that product?
I, I honestly could not tell you operationally.
Having secure storage is a requirement.
Complying, sure. I, yes, there's no question, yeah.
Okay. Does the state, and this is a naive question, so forgive me, but does, does the state regulatory agency overseeing such operations require an inspection?
The state did an inspection. They did an inspection before they were open in December. They, they could never open until the state uh, CRA and B F S come and they do their final state inspections. So they did inspect the facility.
Has the, has the layout of the building changed substantially between December and April?
Uh, I don't believe so. Again, that's a question I.
Again, just.
You mean between April and now?
No, between the state inspection supposedly in December and when they were open in April.
I don't believe so.
Against, again, just viewing through the window, it does not look like a going operation in any way, shape, or form. How many employees were on site during the hours of operation?
Kevin, I, do you have any, do you know these questions? I really don't know these, honestly.
Are there, are there employment or payroll records that would, that would back any of that up?
I'm certain they maintained all, anything that's required, I'm certain, certain they would have. I, I just, I'm not privy to that.
Okay, okay.
If it matters, I'm sure we could.
What hours were the operation?
Uh, again, I, I really couldn't tell you that.
Was there advertisement done so people knew to come and buy things there?
I, I don't know. Um, I think he's trying to get that information for you.
Okay.
Was it just friends and relatives who showed up to buy?
I, I honestly don't know, uh.
Because, you know, in, in all honesty, the fact that there were two days of operation in April, the last two days of the month, and I think working on a deadline from whatever the requirement was to be open. It, it, it kind of smells to this person as straw sales, if, if, if you're familiar with the term.
I am.
Okay. Uh, again, just.
Yeah.
One man's opinion.
Sure. Fair enough. I think it, I mean, again.
Certainly has that appearance from an outside.
I, and I can see why you'd think that for sure. Um, again, but then to look at it and consider it straw sales or classify it is again, interpreting an ordinance that does not have the authority, the ability to do that.
Right, if I knew I had to be open again within my six months, I would open again for a couple of days to satisfy the requirement. That doesn't necessarily make me shady. It means I'm reading the ordinance and trying to follow it.
Uh, to, to Ms. Billy's point, I, this, you know, no one is, uh, gonna come up here and say that this was regular operations, did two days, closed it down. I mean, they were aware of this. They, they conveyed this to the city that we know this is what it is. We know this is what we have to do. We're gonna comply with it. And that's what they did, is strict compliance.
Based, based on your interpretation of that, being in strict compliance, and I ask this rhetorically.
Okay.
If my door is open only for fifteen minutes, Sunday at eleven o'clock at night, and then I close, have I satisfied the definition of an operational business?
Depends on what your ordinance says.
Well, if it doesn't say, then I would, I would suggest that it's up to a reasonable person to make that interpretation.
I would also like to say to, to that point, you know, again, this was conveyed to the city on multiple times that this was their plan. Never once, not one time, did the city ever say, hold on, that's, that's not what this is. You need to do more. It's not sufficient. Never. It was never brought to their attention, and the city was aware of this, and there are correspondences. So if that was a concern, if they didn't like the plan, they certainly could have said something, but they didn't. So a pellet had no reason to think that that was an issue.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Anything you like that?
Nope.
Mr. Elliott, anything you'd like to add?
I have.
Uh, I would just say that I did not know of, uh, I, I did not have any communications, um, post-December other than that they were going to be remodeling, that that was the reason for their closing. Uh, and then subsequently, uh, in, in a correspondence that indicated uh, that, no, they decided not to pursue those plans, that they had decided not to. Uh, they did not pick up. They did submit plans for, uh, a remodel to the building uh, official, but they then, uh, communicated to us that they were not gonna pick up those plans, that, in fact, they'd abandoned those plans. And so those were the only communications post-December that I received. Thank you. Something else you want to add?
If I may, yeah, just to answer Mr. Jacobus's, uh, questions about the operations. Um, so during those days, consistent with CRA state law requirement, they did have cameras, active cameras. It was staffed with two people. Uh, product, the secure storage, I D. tracking, they did have a banner above the door, register open. So they did. They were, they were operating the complaint.
I have another question, please. In order to decide this, do I need to know whether the supervisor of the building inspector can speak as a building inspector?
Well, your charter does allow your administrator, your administrator can step into the, into that role, and he is part of that department.
Okay, thank you.
He's the department head of that department.
He is the head. He is not.
But he's also the department head of that department as well as the city, so he, he actually fills a couple of roles.
So if, if, so a ruling from Greg constitutes a ruling of the building inspector?
I believe that is a, an interpretation you could find, yes.
Thank you.
For the record, I disagree, but just for the record, I, building inspector, yeah, no, no, I know, I know. Yeah.
Hey, Commissioners, we've heard a lot of information. Where would you like to go with this?
Should we do timely first?
No.
No? That seems the easier one.
Well, whatever. You know, the ordinance does not offer a specific definition of operation or open for business. So the question comes to us, I would suggest, is what constitutes being operational? The appellate would ask us to accept two periods totaling twelve, eleven days in a four-month period as open for business. And by, like I said earlier, by that reasoning, have any, have any evidence of a business transaction, no matter how inconsequential, could be interpreted as open for business? What does count as open for business? Like I said, fifteen minutes on a Sunday evening, uh, and that's it? I don't know.
But we have no reason to think that's what it was. We don't have.
Point being, my point being though, is that kind of, in my mind, that defines what's not operational.
Sure.
And being open nine to five, Monday through Sunday, for months at a time is the other end of that spectrum, clearly open operation, business. Someplace in the middle lies the truth. I would offer that by not opening other than for a very limited hours in which they were, and by not operating following the two-day period in April, they, they were not ready to operate. Whether they had their door open and they had staff there and they had product, they were not, in my mind, operational. One man's opinion.
Anyone else? Well, we have two items we need to deal with. So based on that discussion, uh, I think that's item number one, before we get to item number two. So item number one is the, was it operational or not operational? That would be the.
Well, I think the question is, are you going to uphold the decision of the administrator, or are you gonna overturn it? That's the decision you're here to make.
But uphold, we would have to decide that it's not operational.
I believe you would have to interpret the ordinance from the point of view of the administrator.
To overturn it, we would have to decide that it is operational.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
I would ask first that both Mr. Elliott's letter of, what was it, July eighth? And Mr. Brayman's correspondence and all of its, uh, supporting documents be entered into our record. So we have.
I think it is.
I believe it's all in the record.
As part of the agenda.
Well, when, yes, it is. And Jeremy, you can confirm the, because the entire packet that, um, Mr. Byram, gotta write that down. Mr. Byram submitted, uh, included all those orders, including my order, or not order, sorry, letter as well.
Correct.
So yes, it's all in the record.
Without necessarily setting a specific number of hours or days in a particular time period to constitute operation, I would suggest the board make a finding of fact, a common sense defin, uh, definition of operational that let eleven days over an eighteen-month period is not sufficient.
Is that in a form of a motion?
Yes. Uh, I would like us to make a finding of fact in that regard, and then the motion would be to, at some point, to deny. But I haven't made the motion yet. I would just make a finding of fact that that, in my mind, does not come up to the level of operation.
Could you please point to something in the ordinance that asks for that definition?
No.
No.
No. The, the ordinance is quiet on this particular item, and that's why I'm saying a common sense definition of operational would be something more than what has been offered.
Honestly, I'm, I'm stuck on so many things, and one of them is the fact that I think you're right, Mike, that the zoning exception permit would have expired three years ago. And so I.
If I'm, can I address that point?
Like COVID or not.
No, no, aside from COVID.
But let's wait and let them deliberate.
Um, it, the occupancy, well, the occupancy must take place, whatever that means. And then if the use ceases to exist for six months, and certainly, that was a long time ago.
Years.
And, and I don't know that that's even relevant to the question before us now, because obviously this city or whoever, let this keep going forward, even beyond that one year. So maybe that's irrelevant. Now, what is relevant?
I do agree with you. I'd agree with you, Cindy. There's the fact that nothing happened for four years, either, either at the business or by the city has an impact on a six-month. Nothing happened. That, that bothers me, that for four years, nothing happened, and now we're being asked to interpret something that is four years old.
Yes, have you wanted?
I just wanted, yeah, one last point. So to the question about, or the, you know, the, the point that you think that the uh, permit may have expired previously. Um, all I would say to that is that the city confirmed, they acknowledged the December twenty-first through twenty-nine operations. If it expired, one, they had to tell them, and if not, to me, that's deemed waived. I don't believe it expired. I believe there are ongoing conversations, and the city's never made that claim until the agenda that was published tonight.
Can I say something? So, look, we, we're not gonna continue a debate, and I understand what you're saying, but lem, I'm, I'm giving you the legal opinion from, of the city as your attorney. You're not here to decide something four years ago. You're here to decide to uphold a decision or overturn a decision. Now, you can actually, you can use all of those things in your determination. You just need to make sure that they're founded in in your belief and your fact and your interpretation. Um, I think one thing, and I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to argue with Mr. Yes. But there is no question that you have the right, in my opinion, to interpret something that isn't clear. And we, one thing that you figured out in the last hour that we've been talking about this is that if it were clear, you wouldn't be having this conversation. So the interpretation is, is this the spirit of what's, does this comply with what the administrator is saying, that this isn't an ongoing business? That's not to say that I'm telling you that it isn't. Just saying, you, you, that's what you have to interpret. What happened four years ago, whether it should have expired or shouldn't expired, it didn't. I agree with you. It doesn't. It didn't expire, but that's not why you're here.
Thank you.
Let me ask one more.
Thank you.
The letter from. The letter from Greg is denying their application for renewal. Does that in any way affect their ability to just apply for a new one?
Yes.
Yes, well.
There's a, there's a window that closed, which is again, a huge issue here, because the window to apply was, it closed on May 31st.
For the year.
Yes, so that's not gonna open again for another year.
Okay.
But they at the same time had zoning exception permit. It was valid. They had a current license. That's a property right that we believe has been taken, so.
Again, that is not what we're, we're not here for that. This is a decision on a, on a zoning exception permit.
Okay.
And, okay, I mean, disrespect by that, it's just not part of.
I, I get it.
We have a decision to make, maybe a couple of decisions to make, depending on which way we go.
I'm open to a motion, whether we are supporting the administrator's decision or whether we are denying the administrator's decision. Again, that didn't quite sound right.
Overturning. O- overturn.
Overturn, thank you. I knew deny didn't sound right.
I will move that we support the decision of the, of Greg, of the city administrator.
I would second that. And again, I would, I would like us to make finding of fact in support of that, that in our mind, the business was not an operational business.
I understand what you're saying. I'm not quite sure how fact, because it's, uh,
Yeah.
we're, we're more, we're more of an interpretation.
Okay, okay. Okay, never mind.
I mean, if you have something, I'd be happy to hear it, but I don't have a finding of fact.
No, okay, you're.
Well, I mean, you, you are going to make a final, because you're gonna write a written opinion, and it's gonna be what your.
Yeah.
I mean, facts are fact. It's not, it doesn't mean that it's true or untrue. It means it's fact. But you're using that as a basis of your determination, and that is, can be noted, this is being recorded, and I assume you will prepare a written opinion. Um, whether it be the resolution or whether, whether you add it yourself, but you're more than welcome to add that to the record.
So we have a motion for the one item, supporting the administrator's decision. We have support for that. Do we have a discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none, uh, roll call vote.
Berg?
Yes.
Berthold?
Support.
Bailey?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously. Do we need to address the second part also?
I think you should, okay. Do we have a motion about the, uh, past the deadline time? That's another part that was brought up.
You know, I would, I would base this strictly on the fact that the letter of denial from Mr. Elliot was dated July 8th, and the letter of appeal is dated August 12th. And a strict reading, if I am correct, of the ordinance says the appeal needs to be within 10 days.
And I believe the letter was August 9th, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure either.
Just for clarification.
Okay, okay.
But still, past 10 days.
So I think the letter was August 12th, but the application was August 9th.
Anyway, we'll, we'll be on the 10 day.